Thank you, with an invocation from Jordan and then Jen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Father in Heaven, we gather together as a council and as a city to plead for thy help as we make decisions that will affect the lives of all those who live within the borders of Syracuse. We ask for thy knowledge and thy wisdom that we can make good decisions and that we can listen to those we're here to serve. We are grateful for the opportunity and please bless any within our borders that are afflicted or going or suffering that they can be comforted and watched over. We ask and thank, well, we thank thee for this water that we're receiving and please continue to bless us with thine abundance. We are truly grateful for the opportunities we have and for the blessings we've received and these things we pray for and then in Jesus' name, amen.
To begin, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two on our agenda tonight is a request to be on the agenda to administer the oath of office to our youth court members and volunteers. So I'll, Lori, come up.
We started, when I started, we would got like getting twenty, thirty cases per year. From a form from our city or some police department and other ways here. We've gone from getting twenty, thirty cases to hundreds of cases plus. So in the ten years that I'm hanging here, we've probably reached a lot of maybe seven to eight hundred kids in the community. So if you think about it, if you just wanted to think about your kids, they give them an opportunity to have their chance. It didn't seem like that way, but I don't know if it's people's things, but from the overall number of kids, there's really we have about twenty-eight, twenty-three, maybe not many, twenty-three volunteers and I'm proud of each one of them. They've all jumped in and they're, they're very responsible, respectable. I couldn't even front of kids, anyone of the other, you want to know? I also have one neighbor started, he was from two wood high nurse, he didn't know how many cases it cost, but he's been teaching. He now have five, five students, Taylor, Adams, and Stacy Johnson, current white, and she's helped himself. So I'm just super proud of all of these kids today. Thank you for the parents for giving me all the needs to get to know them. They've really become a part of my life. They're one way than my kids are, they spend all time with me. You know, I don't keep one of them and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So if you're, if you'd love to go forward and create all of that.
There's so many of you all, it's a beautiful sight.
Yeah, line up kids so that you can be seen and that your parents take your picture.
Swish together like, like each other.
See everybody now? Okay, we'll go ahead and do the oath. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Utah. And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. We look forward to some great service from our youth. Next, we have two appeals that we will have public hearings for for the issuance of citations for secondary water regulation violations. The first one will be for Robert Love, if you would come forward. Please state your name for the record and address.
Robert Love at twelve ninety-seven South eleven hundred West.
Okay.
The bill in question is a rental home I have immediately behind my home at thirteen oh four South ten twenty-five West. The, when I opened my August water bill, I saw an amount listed adjustment for seven hundred dollars and I called the city people and indicated that was a fine. Talked to the Public Works Department and actually went and visited them and they indicated had violations on June eighth, June twenty-sixth, July third, and July twenty-fourth. This is the first that I was aware of it. I called my tenant, who happened to be out of town at the time, and they indicated they had seen one notice and thrown it away. And so anyway, while I was at the Public Works Department, I was able to view those and they take a picture of those. So there and I, this last week, I mentioned my tenant, I says that they had pictures and they admitted to one more, but still a little bit less than forthright with me on, let me, but they it would have been a simple issue if they'd have texted a picture of it, I'd have fixed it immediately. But they didn't. They pay the rent on time, they keep the house clean and, but this is a major challenge. I pay the water bill there, so they have actually never seen the notification. I, it's behind my house, I programmed it. I'm the one that screwed up. I programmed it on a Tuesday and a Saturday, which are legal days, but it flowed. Went over midnight into the next day and so the violations that, you know, of course they're corrected now, but they weren't corrected. The reason I feel that these fines are unfair is because I was never given any notice. My tenant should have, they failed me. But the, the city has a responsibility to notify me. The only I received a citation notice on August fifteenth on the last offense. And prior to that, and that was three weeks after that. So it was August fifteenth and the, the, it was July twenty-fourth when that last offense was. And so what I would request, because the is that the fine be, be abated. The, on my last utility bill, they charged, it was, it was a thousand dollar fine, but they itemized it nine eighty in adjustments, twenty dollars in penalty. And so I just request that those fines and penalty be abated.
Okay, counsel, if any of you have questions, who wants to start?
I don't have questions so much as I, having thought about this, you know, we're charged with having, if they're extenuating circumstances, that's when there should be exceptions to the, the fine fees and, and delivery of such. And I think that this merits looking at our policy to see when it is that we notify the actual homeowner rather than just a notice on the door, because there are rentals units. And I think that it could have been preventative had we notified you and anybody, once there's a warning, I think that's the time that we can curb the fines and fees that come after that point. Because I do think the majority of people want to take care of that before it becomes an issue. So knowing that, that you are the owner but not living there, I think that makes it an extenuating circumstance in my, in my opinion. And so I, I think that this is worth looking at, changing our policy to make sure that we're sending out on the warning rather than the actual fine, especially once they get to be several hundred dollars and up to a thousand as you've received. And I'd like to look at our policy and consider this an extenuating circumstance and, and remove the fines.
Yeah, I'm gonna call up Robert Whiteley, our Public Works Director. Can you speak to the delivery method of citations, please? But I'd like, I'd like to make sure that we get that part on the record before we go further.
And is the schedule on the bill at all when it comes out, like the watering schedule that we had to abide by? Was it, how, what was the delivery method of letting the? I know, but I need to.
So notifications for violation follows the ordinance is in section four twenty-five, one thirty H. Citations may be served by any of the following methods and by posting prominent place such as front door or fence was one of those which was done. So.
So can we say that in every case, there was a notice given at the address of, of violation?
Yeah. So.
Okay.
And as far as on the, on the bill, does it, did we send out by mail, like what days they can choose from in that area?
So that was sent out at the, in April after the resolution was was adopted here by council. The May, excuse me, it was the May utility bill when the official notice went out with the watering schedule. Basically, it's the same as what last year's was. The only difference was the one day a week on the early and late ends of the season and two days a week during Memorial Day to Labor Day. That was the only change from last year, so.
Okay, so the other question would be, so if they were cited in June, then this notice would go on the July bill, correct? Because we're, we're
Yeah.
This is only on one bill.
The cutoff is like the twenty-fifth of the month, so anything prior to that. So if, if it would have been, let me look and see the date.
So the first one, the June eighth was on the first bill.
That's, well, no.
The June eighth was a warning, so that would not have gone on a bill, but the June twenty-sixth likely went on the August bill because the cutoff was June twenty-fifth, am I correct?
As well as the July third, correct? Probably went on the same bill.
That's what he's saying.
Okay.
Okay. August after all the fines have finished.
Hey, Jordan?
Yeah, do you have anything else that?
Pardon me?
Do you have anything else that?
No.
So, so one of the interesting things on this one is this does bring out a nuance to our ordinance. We say on Wednesday. But a lot of us set our zones to start on Monday.
Eleven PM.
At eleven PM.
How long are you up to water?
And, and let's say I have fifteen zones.
Ten minutes per zone.
So, so, so I guess that where many of these are at one forty-eight in the morning. Is that, is that one?
Okay, so I'm gonna bring this up just because I actually did bring this up before we started the watering season. Because I said, you know, so is it if you start on this time or if you end on this time? And it is in the minutes that it's up until midnight and the next day is the next day because we talked about Sunday being a no water day. And what happens if somebody started watering on Saturday, but they continued to water into Sunday? So this was actually brought up.
Well, I mean, but if.
I'm not saying that we can't change it, but that was actually brought up.
No, and I, I, I do recall, I mean, because this was done quite some time ago, I recall the discussion, but I think in fairness, if one of our council members, including myself actually, so multiple council members had to stop and think about it, we crafted the ordinance. Kind of have a little bit of a hard time thinking how well does.
And I actually want to go back and I have a smart controller, so I can tell which days not to water. And I say, don't water on the days that are not allowed me, instead of twenty days can water. I am curious to see what it does. I actually, I'm, I'm now thinking I need to go back and look and see how those smart controllers are they taking into account when the cycle ends?
So.
I'm not sure if they are.
I, I actually drove by both of these properties and they don't look like they have ten zones. And the times that they're timestamped at, they're all after one AM and a couple of them are almost to two and one's at four thirty in the morning. If you even set that for even eleven thirty, the zones at night, I don't think they'd still be cycling at one twenty in the morning. Unless it's overwatering, like I, what time?
And it would take several hours.
Yeah, but that property doesn't look like, how many zones do you have in that property, sir?
Nine.
That's a small property, nine zones.
And, and I don't, and, and in mine, for example, I have drip lines that, that are in my zone cycle, that I run the drip lines for like a half hour because they're literally a drip. And so they run for a longer duration, but they're putting nowhere near down what anybody else is putting down in fifteen minutes.
So what I'm getting at is, I feel like this was I, I'm a firm believer you always show grace first. In the way these bills are laid out, the, when you would have got the cutoff date was July fifth or July twenty-fifth and two of those would have gone on to that. And then the twenty-fourth was, oh, would have, they've all gone on to that same one.
It would all have.
It would all be on the same day.
Yeah, so that with you not having any form of notification in between, I think that needs to be taken into consideration. All of a sudden, you were just hit with all of them at once. And what would we be if we aren't kind to people whenever something kind of is out of their hands and you don't live in that house, so? And if your tenant is throwing away things, you probably might want to have a talk with them though, because
Oh, definitely.
Well, like responsibility is key here, but we couldn't really take any in this time.
My, my suggestion is we reduce it to a single fine, to the two hundred, because it, it is each of our responsibilities to, even if we are landlords, that, that property is still our responsibility. So I, I do think leniency is key, but I do think there is a problem that we need to make sure we're holding.
Okay, so we got a couple others.
My, my main concern, and this, this probably speaks to more to landlords, is if, is there is, do we want to look at the code and change it where there's a, a mailed violation to the actual property owner rather than the, just a door hanger?
I think, I think it's a good idea.
I think that's, that's my proposal, is to look at our ordinance to see about sending it with a warning because then we can prevent.
Or maybe even the first.
Are we now wanting to require that the publics that are code enforcers, not only do they check that, that, they post something, they go back and make sure that that address isn't owned by, actually by someone else?
I'm just posing the question.
Registered as a rental.
Yeah.
That, that, I don't think that's fair to put on our staff.
Okay.
I, I think it happens to all the landlords.
I, I do think that we are gonna have an opportunity to look at this again in the future when this comes around next April. And so I think these are probably questions to put in the parking lot and, and discuss, but I, I tend to side with where Jordan's at, that there still needs to be some responsibility to, and maybe that's an opportunity to pass on to the, to the tenant. But I would support the reduction of the fine down to the two hundred dollars. Still requires that we, you know, hold it accountable and, but recognize that there were some extenuating circumstances here.
I would agree with that.
So I'll take a motion.
Jordan?
I move that we reduce this. I, I think this is a little heavy-handed, given the circumstances, that we reduce this down to the, just a single offense and work to make sure that we can clarify the language.
I second.
So down to the two hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, for the reason of it shouldn't, there shouldn't be a fine.
Okay, so your fine is reduced to two hundred dollars as a single offense, but it's also recorded that you are very aware of what your responsibility is going forward, because we'll probably have this problem going forward into next year.
Okay.
Not necessarily with you, sir, but.
No, but I, it was not a personal thing, that's just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the Marina, is it Courteir?
Good evening. I emailed all the council members, all details. So I've got, well, my family got three violations. The first one was on Tuesday, June seventh, the second one on Tuesday, June fourteenth. And then the third one landed on Thursday, July twenty-first. They all are within the city code. I would request that the city council can reconsider for the reasons that I've stated in the email and well, the first two on Tuesdays, we, we lived in that house for, I think, my husband about fifteen years. I've been married to him about eight years. We have a very old system and since we started, you know, this droughts getting worse and worse, we need to replace the system. That's just a no-brainer. We just didn't have time to do that. And when we got the first notice, he did try to reprogram it saying like, okay, well, if they don't want us to water on Tuesday, we have to switch it to Wednesday, Thursday. And I, I hope it's obvious that the time has changed. Like it was ten PM, it switched to four fifty AM. It's still during the night. We never tried to water during, I mean, we never watered during the hit on purpose because that only ruins all the vegetation. It didn't work. And again, this is our responsibility. We didn't make the system work. So from that time, we just shut it off and every time that we would water the lawn, we would turn it on manually and turn it off manually. My husband comes home after one o'clock. We have a little toddler, so I'm lucky if I put him to bed at eleven. So every time we water, it's after eleven, it's around midnight. So on July twenty-first, when it happened at one, this is really sad. I feel very bad about myself because we actually do preserve water. That's why this is so humiliating to me, because I'm actually a person that does preserve regardless of the city codes. This is who I am. So, um, he just fell asleep and he didn't turn it off. And it randomly went off at one o'clock. Normal people, I think, you know, don't do that during the daytime. And actually, we all were home and when it went through several cycles, I think it was kind of in the middle. We saw the sprinkles, we heard them and saw and we're like, what is going on? We immediately went off and shut them off and we saw the plug was in. So from that day, I, instead of my husband, go and turn it on and turn it off manually, just to make sure that this doesn't happen. Because I know the next violation is a thousand dollars and I will feel even worse about our family. So if, if you could just take that all in consideration, just, we are aware, we are trying to okay, if this has to be a Thursday, Tuesday for our address and a Sunday, that's what the city decided we have to obey. This was not intentional. And we ended up with seven hundred. I am so grateful that this season is almost over, so hopefully. Well, our system is up. We got rain. Thank you so much for mentioning that. We are, I think we're all grateful. And finally, the, the temperature is down, so everything kind of comes back to life. So if you can consider that this is not on purpose, we didn't have any violation during last year and I think if you have any records, you can see that we actually good citizens, we're trying to follow and obey everything. I apologize, I just feel a little nervous. This is my first time in court.
This is a court. I know, but it's that like, you're hearing this schedule.
Understand.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
So I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I, I wrote back to you.
Thank you so much.
About my situation and I think it just, I want to share because I've changed three sprinkler timers this season. Sunday, I, I go to the same church as Jordan. I had to leave early because I got a call that my brother was out of town. His sprinkler was malfunctioning, doing the same thing. Going off in the middle of Sunday and he's programmed it and things happen.
Controller, is it a smart controller?
Beehive. Yeah, so Orbit's Beehive, it's a smart controller. I shared, shared that with you. It's a hundred and twenty dollars, a hundred and thirty dollars, and you get a seventy-five dollar rebate from the Water District. I've replaced three of them now this summer, my own, my mom's and my brother's. And I did mine just two days ago with the same one, which maybe is my fault. It's a beehive again, but the, the reason I'm bringing that up is just because I'm very vigilant about it. I pay attention to it and things happen. And mine malfunctions and I've tried everything I can and I've thought, heaven forbid, what if my neighbor sees me? You know, out watering illegally. And I think we villainize it to the point where it's, you're clearly disturbed by it, right? It's not something that, you know, is sitting very well with you. And I can see that you're passionate about this, you care about the situation. And so I would recommend leniency in this situation because it's very clear that this was not intentional and efforts have been made to conserve water and you know, any one of us could be in that same condition and with smart timers or not. So that's my opinion.
I would say we've seen in the past some people come before us and, and sometimes there's a real flippancy to it where it's just too bad, you know, this, and, and they clearly don't feel the same remorse for, for the mistake that's been made. And so that's when it's harder to reduce fees because you don't think that there will be a change there. It's, it's likely that that will continue, but I don't feel that way. And I think that there's definitely room for leniency here. I think it was unintentional. I, I think we've discussed several times this midnight beginning and, and how mistakes can be made. And so I think that you have an intention to remedy the situation. You've even gone so far as to turn off your system. And, and so I, I think there's definitely room for leniency.
Thank you. So I, I agree with leniency. I wouldn't say, I would, I would say reduce it because your guys' lawn is super green. It gets impressively green. So that kind of, it, it, it's one of those things that if we're trying to conserve water and it's like a super impressively green lawn and you got, you know what I'm saying? It's.
I mean, we gotta remember though, you can water, you can train your water, your yard to be very green.
This year, my yard is sort of green.
Yeah.
It's all right. It's enough to get me by, not get a ticket. I wanted to, it was expensive though. But I would say I would agree to that, reducing it because, I mean, things happen. People have lives, you know, it, sometimes they get overworked and underpaid and tired and we forget things. I have horses, I forget to turn the water off and, and I pay for that too. So I get it. But yeah, I would agree. I would say reducing it down also.
This is over two billing cycles in this case.
I, I understand that, but.
No, I'm just pointing that out.
That, that's where I'm struggling, where, where one of them is at one oh two in the afternoon. And I understand people are tired, but at the same time, that, that's, I struggle with that one.
Yeah.
Again, at four fifty-seven AM, I, I can see that it was malfunctioning. I, I I feel for you and I, I'm okay taking away one of these. I'm just not sure which one. My hope would be that if we, if we reduced it, it would go to repair of the system to. My hope would be that um, if we, if we reduced it, it would go to repair of the system to prevent this from happening in the future, just because I I don't foresee this drought getting better. We all have to be better about this. And the path forward is 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 going to be difficult and it's going to require us all to make changes in the way we do things. So I just wanna, I'm I'm trying to figure out how to do that in such a way that uh, gets the message across that that it's, this is not a small thing. Because when water's gone, it's gone. So I can already get rid of one of them, but I'm, I guess I'm not sure which one I could accept the recommendation.
Well, did you have any thoughts?
Oh, my thoughts are that I I do like what Jordan said that, you know, if there is a reduction, hopefully that can go towards a new sprinkler, maybe a smart sprinkler timer. Um, because learning how to manage and and understand how your sprinkler timer works is is important. I I feel I I I feel like, you know, I did, I did have the opportunity to to read your email. I don't think this is, this is like an egregious offense where they're just trying to, you know, say, oh, it doesn't matter. And I I think they were trying to comply with the rules and and maybe have a sprinkler system and timer that's that's out of date. I would probably be be of the thinking that, you know, we re, we reduce to the, to a a single $200 fine. But again, just, just like David said earlier, this is now on the record. The leniency has been, has been shown and and like, like you said, moving forward, we're gonna have these same type of restrictions next year. So it would, you know, it'd be a good idea to to take whatever steps necessary to make sure that you're complying moving forward.
Do I have a motion from anyone?
I move that we reduce the fine to $200 going forward and and just let it be recorded.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hey.
Okay, so your uh, fine is reduced to $200.
Thank you.
But again, we do have a record, so we're gonna have, you know, in the future would be brought up if if this came before us again.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much for your recommendation.
Onto the next item. We have an appeal of an administrative decision to approve a conditional use permit, application for swim kids. We could bring forward the applicant for modification. Oh, yes. Uh, at this time, Lisa has asked to recuse herself from this. Will and so she'll not be voting on this.
And Mayor, would it be helpful if I introduce this? I I wrote the staff report. There were some legal issues with uh, with the uh, this appeal that I want to just bring to the council's attention. It was in the memo. Um, but there there's a few things. First, when when the planning commission considered this initially, that was December last year. Uh, there was no appeal from that decision um, from the planning commission. So the conditional use was approved. Uh, conditional uses are are vested property interests that can't be taken away unless unless you go through proper procedures. And in this case, the commission was reviewing the the uh, the conditional use permit. That's not a a mechanism under our code where you can actually revoke the permit. Uh, there's a way to do it. It would be, you know, the CED department would initiate a revocation proceeding. Um, so with with that being the case, the commission would not have been um, it would not have been appropriate for them to revoke the the permit. It was okay for them to collect evidence and and consider whether, you know, how things were going. Um, additionally, um, when it comes to appeals uh, from revocation decisions, the only one who can appeal it is the person who held the permit. Uh, so there'd be a standing issue as well. I I, this is probably news to the to the appellant um, as and and I understand where you're coming from. But this is just, this is my analysis from last week when I was preparing the staff report. Uh, so so my recommendation is that the council um, not revoke the permit. Uh, you can take, you know, you can consider the arguments and and this should essentially be referred over to the CED department for uh, for potential revocation. Um, but um, that's my my position. If the council were to revoke their permit based on these proceedings, it would, it would not be legally defensible.
Okay, so uh, with that said, and advice of of legal counsel, what we'll be hearing tonight is a recommendation to CED um, for whether they should be considering this permit. Uh, it will not be uh, about our approval to revoke the permit. Okay, but if you present your case for why you think that this is, needs to be considered.
Okay, um, so I have spoken to the CD, CED director Noah Steele, and he is the one that um, advised us to appeal the decision. So that is a little frustrating to hear that now we're going backwards. Um, so we live in the property directly behind um, Swim Kids, the house. Since uh, December 2020, um, as when we moved in, not aware that this business was happening until about the summer. And we've gone to the planning commission meetings. We have given our our statements and it just um, doesn't seem to be getting anywhere. Our our issue is that it is excessive traffic being brought to an already busy intersection right there on Bluff Ridge Drive and um, 2500, right there by the school. In our backyard, their property is above ours. Um, so you can look directly into our backyard. So our reasonable right of privacy in our own backyard is completely taken away by this business. As well as the fact that this business is not even a Syracuse business. This business is uh, not in our county, not in our city. This is a Utah County business that's operating in Syracuse. In the planning commissioning meeting, um, they discussed code 10.35.040. That street parking was not to be utilized for their business, that they had to provide efficient off-street parking. In the meeting, they counted seven spaces that could be used in the park, in the driveway. One space is being utilized by a swim instructor. The others are not being utilized. Um, when I asked the director of how this could be enforced, he um, directed me to Heather Nielsen, the business license coordinator, who said that she, he stated that she would work with code enforcement to enforce that. But then hearing from Heather, code enforcement has no authority to enforce that code. That right now, that would fall on the police department to enforce that code. So we're kind of stuck in a position of what can we do other? We can't do anything other than letting this continue to terrorize our home because no one can do anything about it. So.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions?
So I I guess I would need some clarification on who is actually in charge of enforcing this or not. Because I I recall I I was liaison to the planning commission last December when when the application came forward for the conditional use permit. And uh, I do recall all the stipulations you you described and some of the nuisances you guys pre- uh, presented. Um, and I also recall, um, and obviously the the permit holder is not uh, present, I don't think. But um, there was discussion at the time that the business would be in operation through June and that it would transition over to their full-time facility in Leighton.
So that's what we've, the date keeps changing.
Okay.
Um, the homeowner indicated to us last month that they were going to stop lessons in September, which they're running at full force, just as they were, have been all summer. Um, so no, no change has has come.
I guess those are kind of the answers I would need to understand who's enforcing it and what the plan is for long term because before we seek revocation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Steele to come forward for a minute for a point of clarification. So my question is, if the business operates in the city, do they not have to have a business license in the city? Are they getting away with some kind of loophole that says because they're temporary, they don't have to have a license here?
No, they have a business license and a conditional use permit, which planning commission approved. My apologies for any confusion. Um, there is a little bit of bureaucracy involved with this sort of thing. So the question was, who has authority to enforce this? So being a conditional use permit, um, like Paul was was saying, that if you guys want to revoke this, you can instruct me to revoke it and I'll, but we just have to be official about the proceedings.
You need to do that.
Question.
Well, you guys can instruct, you guys can give direction of what you want to see with this application, right?
Hang on.
Yeah, so the council shouldn't be giving that direction because they're, they're, they might eventually be in the appellate body. So um, the mayor could could do so because he's, you know, the the CEO. But uh, yeah, the council shouldn't be directing you to revoke. They could just direct you to investigate.
Okay, so let me restate that. If you guys uh, want to direct me to investigate it, which would eventually, could eventually result in revocation. Um, you know, this now is the time to discuss and figure out all the details.
I, so I would, I I'm wondering if there, with the conditional use permit, if two of, if I recall, and maybe Paul, you can correct me or Noah, but if there, there's two, there's at least two conditions that could potentially be in violation. One is the parking issue. Um, and then the other was, I think, uh, noise or.
And tho- those are both.
Well, it's the parking and the number of cars.
Parking is PD, but I don't know.
So the the Home Occupation Ordinance says that the amount of parking shouldn't exceed what you would normally find in a residential neighborhood. Um, and so during their initial approval, they drew out a diagram of of where acceptable parking would be and they said, no parking in front of the homes or the sides of homes around them. So across the street, there's a field that doesn't have a home. And so they said, park in front of the field or on your, on your property. Um, and so uh, we're, we're getting reports that that hasn't been happening. And then during the review with planning commission, they, you know, they were, they discussed the parking issue again. Um, and again, we we talked about where they should park and it was agreed that they would do better. But there was also a a lot of discussion about the the expected term of the business. And you know, the applicant was there to explain that they're building another pool. They'll be gone like, like the appellant was stating. So uh, I think planning commission decided that it it could be a temporary issue to let them finish out the season and then review it again if it's continuing next summer.
So this conditional use application is dated November 12th, 2021. So that would say that they would use it, I would think it would be over the summer is what it would be for because it's an outdoor pool, correct?
It's an indoor.
Indoor.
Oh.
Yeah, I Googled it.
Covered.
Okay, so um, a couple of things. Number one being that we have similar issues with other home use where we have to make sure that the traffic is not impeding the normal neighborhood. And occasionally, what's suggested in the beginning of a permit doesn't turn out to be what happens later. And if it is becoming a threat to the neighborhood, then there is a reason to to reconsider. Um, but that would have to be investigated. I'm not making that assumption without directing that there, there'd be something forward. Does anybody else have any questions before you want to start talking about a solution?
Well, one thing I want to address is um, because I I hear this one a lot and and I think people have an idea that if you're in your backyard, you're guaranteed privacy from anyone else seeing in your backyard. I just want to make sure that's clear that um, like, for example, my backyard, I have a two-story house. I can see in every single one of my neighbors' backyards. And and so I I guess, while I I'm fine with with you wanting to have privacy, I I don't think that's a reason to revoke a business permit because people can see in your backyard. Um, parking, I think we can, we can look at enforcing that uh, better. Uh, in fact, we should take an action to do that. And then the other one was noise, which is also very enforceable. So I would actually like to get, make sure that these, that that we're getting them the enforcement they're looking for. But at the same time, I I don't see this as a reason for revocation of a permit. I I think this is just, we need to do better at making sure that those conditional uses are enforced.
But if, so here's, here's my question, Jordan. So if if the, if a condition of the permit is that their customers park in a particular manner, is that on the city to enforce that or is that on the the?
So he brings up an, okay, Paul brings up an interesting point because this has come up before and so I'm just gonna liken it to other similar situations. When we have like home daycares or uh, preschools, uh, one of the conditions is, is that they don't, you know, uh, park all over the neighborhood and and block traffic. And in cases in the past where they, the patrons of a business didn't do that, then that could be reconsidered. So it would be on the, it would be on the uh, business owner to enforce with its patrons. Other, it's not on us to make sure that they, you know, to police this for them.
That's not, I don't think that's what, like, so if they are parking in other places, who can we send to say you're in violation of the code?
Right, so we can send the police to say that they're illegally parked. But are they actually illegally parked or are they illegally parked according to the condition? If it's only because of the condition, then I'm not sure if it's police or code enforcement, but.
How do you show that that car parked there is at that location?
But the key is, is that the business owner, if they want to continue with their permit, has to take some responsibility to make sure they communicate to regular patrons of something like a school or uh, swimming lessons.
Sure.
That they follow the the conditions of a permit.
So as far as parking, our code enforcement officer works closely with PD because if it's a safety or urgent matter that, you know, PD need, could get involved. But for the most part, if it's a illegal parking issue, that's code enforcement. It's, you know. So if it's a, if it's a risk to health, safety, welfare, immediate kind of thing, police can respond, especially after hours or if somebody's brought, blocking right of way. But if it, there's a lot of people parking trailers on the street in front of their house for longer than 24 hours and neighbors complain, that's code enforcement. And the reason why uh, you have these, all these different people involved is because each one touches a little bit on each one. So it's a, it's a home occupation, so that's our business licensing professional. And it's parking issue, so code enforcement and CED, that's, you know, it's a, it's a local business. And then planning commission is involved because it's a major conditional use permit. Major conditional use permits go to planning commission for approval. So in 2021, planning commission approved this. Um, and so like Paul was saying, the the revocation of uh, that permit, we have to make sure they have their their due diligence and properly notified so the applicant or so that the business owner knows clearly well what we're discussing.
So, so I think that's actually fair. Um, Paul's point, I I think it it would be um, if they are violating the conditions of the conditional use, I do think it's appropriate to uh, open an investigation and see if that conditional use is uh, being honored. Um, but I think that's all the only action we can take tonight.
Does everyone else agree that we should look into this as violation of the conditions?
I agree.
Yeah, we hold the conditions, so.
Yeah, I think that would be prudent.
Okay, so that's the action for tonight is I will direct CED to look into whether the conditions of the permit are being followed. And at which point he'll report back and there will be action one way or another. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next, we would like to bring forward uh, Counselor Breann Brass. Breann has interviewed with the city to become the replacement for our city attorney who is leaving us. And I would like to introduce her to all of you and allow you a chance to ask any questions before I ask for your consent to appoint her as our new city attorney. Let me just say that uh, she interviewed well uh, and was by far the top candidate that I recommended to go forward. Um, because of her experience with cities similar to ours, um, being a deputy attorney for Clearfield uh, speaks largely to our neighbor being very similar in circumstance. So uh, I think that's one of the strong points along with others. And I'm going to let you introduce yourself just briefly, now that I've said a few words.
And it's nice to meet you all. My name's Breann Brass, but I do go by Bree, if you'd like to call me Bree. Um, I went to Gonzaga University School of Law. I graduated in 2010. I have worked for Clearfield City. I worked there for about five years as their deputy city attorney. I currently work as the South Salt Lake Deputy City Attorney. I do a lot of their land use there. I'm familiar with state land use laws and all other matters of the law and municipal government. I'm really excited about this opportunity to work for Syracuse. I have family. They're here today um, that live in Syracuse. And so I I just really. that live in Syracuse. And so I I'm just really excited for this opportunity, and I thank you for even considering me.
Does anyone have any questions for Bree?
Do I have one?
Go ahead.
Are you looking forward to slowing down a little bit? Because we're not as crazy as South Salt Lake. We got our moments, but.
We have our own version of crazy.
We do. Not as wild.
Have you met me? I mean, she's gonna have.
I've already briefed her that we have our own version of crazy. So that does happen here.
Yeah, I don't.
Can she answer? She can really answer that. So I have a question. What's your forte? What do you consider your kind of area of focus? What do you excel in?
Well, I have the most experience in criminal prosecution, so that's probably the most comfortable area of the law for me, but land use is probably my second best area. And I also do a lot of the administrative law hearings for South Salt Lake. I do the business licensing side of things, development. We we all do all areas of law in South Salt Lake. So I've gotten to know the international fire code, the international building code, and all sorts of things I never thought that I would be looking into. I am looking into, and that's what is exciting about municipal law is I am in-house counsel for a firm that essentially has its hand in every area of the law. And so that's exciting because I get to learn things that I never knew I had an interest in before. And some things I maybe don't want to continue learning, but if it's for the city, then I'm I'm excited to delve in.
Other questions?
That was a great question.
Yeah, I don't have any questions per se. I just, I mean, reading your resume and then hearing the the advice from the committee members, it sounds like you're overqualified, and and I think we're excited to have you. I would support it full.
So in this case, that it's a mayoral appointment, do I get to make the motion on this one? Or do I have to? I don't think the motion for consent has to come from the council.
Yeah, your your action is made by putting her forward. So I think, yeah, you don't get to make a motion. Sorry, Mayor.
You're the advice.
So I make the motion that we approve. Let me get your full name. Is just Breann Brass.
Yes.
As our new city attorney.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Ananemously, you are our new city attorney. Welcome to the city.
Welcome.
Gonna miss Paul. Thank you so much.
There will be great opportunities to get to know you better from all of us, and I'm looking forward to that.
All right, Paul up, Stan Bree, you're up.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bree.
Mayor, just really quick for the record, that was a actual resolution to appoint her. So we'll just announce that you effectively adopted resolution R twenty two thirty four, appointing Ms. Brass to the city attorney position.
Welcome.
All right. So at this point, we're going to move on to the general business section of our meeting. And to start off, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for those who have things they'd like to be considered, that's possibly on an agenda item or is on an item that has not been brought to our attention yet. You have three minutes to share your thoughts. And you must state for the record your name and address so that we know where you're from. And I will open that up now.
Councilmembers, rest assured, we will chase Paul down to wherever what city he's at and and keep him busy. So my name is Logan Johnson with Wright Development. Our address is eleven seventy eight West Legacy Crossing in Centerville, Utah. Just wanted to make a few statements. We had an opportunity here before our item is heard later on. Number one, the property their application is centered on is planned for as medium density in the master plan. That is clear, and that's the governing land use document for cities' decisions. The planning commission has twice recommended approval for this land use application. Wright Development has developed as much commercial along two thousand west as anybody has. And it's our opinion that the retail market is changing rapidly. And and as that retailers are changing their behaviors, we think that there is some potential viability for a big box retailer up on the corner. We do not think that there's potential for that same use south of the future four fifty. This application for your reference does include commercial rezones in our best efforts to try to show our commitment to do commercial alongside with this rezone. This rezone strengthens my ability to make the development contiguous. If I have some certainty here, my ability to continue continuity along the block is strengthened, which again isn't necessarily council's purview, but just FYI. And the primary beneficiaries of this of of this rezone are the residents of Syracuse trying to sell their homes to allow this land use to occur. Wright Development will live, we will be just fine. The primary beneficiaries are these residents. The problem with assembling so many properties is holdouts. And we would respectfully request the city not join the list of holdouts in this area in in our ability to develop and these people's ability to sell. Thank you. I don't know if I made it in three minutes.
I'll remember my name and address this time. Jamie LaRue, and I live at four four six South, two thousand west in Syracuse. I am one of the homeowners that has signed a contract with Wright Development. We've done this. We've been in this process for almost a year now. And we would like to see a positive resolution to this. The development that they have shown and put out shows a lot of concern and for the citizens. It is nice to look at. It looks like it will be very good. And as a homeowner and as a citizen of Syracuse, I would like to encourage the council to make their decision and with by the end of the month so that we can get on with our lives and the way we want to. We would not have signed if we did not feel that that would be the best use of the land and the best price. We would not have done that. And we would like to go on and go forth and not have to stay under waiting resolution or be given the assumption that we can't sell our land unless it's for a certain it not division, a certain use. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Craig Arrington, five oh six South, two thousand west. I'm one of the homeowners as well, and I think Jamie's pretty much said everything we need to say. We'd like to have a positive outcome tonight if that's all possible. Thank you.
Lord of the Night, four thousand south, two thousand west. I'm one of the holdouts. And I I'm not going to speak against this. I am going to make a comment. I've really been against apartments, and there's some higher density housing being proposed, but I'm going to say I appreciate the fact that this is going to be home owned units. I think homeownership adds to our community. People vest in their homes, they vest in the community. It's different than an apartment where you have a transit community moving in and out. And so I appreciate that they're not trying to put in apartments. I will be honest, I suspect that I will one day be gone. I've lived here for twenty seven years, and I've loved living there. And I sure love that two lane highway that used to exist, but it's gone. And you know, that's that's what happens. The way you live, the way you like to live, I feel like growth has just pushed us out. I listened to all the arguments about water. We never had any concerns about water years ago. It was a wonderful time, but I recognize times have changed. Our populations increased. So I just wanted to say to the developer, I appreciate that these would be townhomes that people would purchase and feel some investment into their home and into the community. And I appreciate my neighbors. They think I'm mad at them. I was. We used to argue about water times. And now we argue about land sales, but I just wanted to make that comment for them.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, the mayor asked I briefly take over for him. He had attended something. With that, we will go ahead and close public comment. And next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I'm assuming we've all had the opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any comments?
I move that we approve the minutes for July twenty sixth, special meeting and work session, and the August ninth, truth and taxation, and the August ninth business meeting.
Okay, motions are made. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is so weird.
All right, we have an item on the common consent agenda. It is proposed ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty one, which will amend section three dot fifty dot zero two zero of the Syracuse City Municipal Code pertaining to the membership of the Disaster Preparedness Committee. Is there anyone speaking to this? If not, I can give a quick update.
No, it's just it's consent. We've discussed it before, but there's a ordinance associated with it.
Waiting for this to.
Yep, so.
By the way, I'm, this is a great example of just, you know, how easily we can transition. You know, we've got that continuity with the mayor pro temp. So great job. Great job, Jordan.
Anyway, so we we will be adding an additional member to this committee due to a new district being added to the city of Syracuse. So this will be adding additional member. Again, this was provided in the packet. I will go ahead and let the mayor call for a motion.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion?
I propose that we go ahead and amend the ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty one, amending section thirty dot fifty dot zero two zero of the Syracuse City Municipal Code pertaining to the membership of the disaster preparedness committee to increase the seats.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Number nine, proposed resolution R twenty two dash thirty three, updating the fiscal year wage scale. Steve?
Just a few recommended changes to the wage scale in the packet. The first one is to add a firefighter one temporary position. We've discussed this with the council before. It is a five percent less than the firefighter two. That's how we came to that analysis. Also, we propose to add a part time passport agent at the same wage scale as the admin assistant position. And then also correction or a revised wage scales for rec one, two, and three. We actually did discuss this a while back in the Parks and Rec deep dive to be a little bit more competitive with wages and to try and retain some of our rec assistants. We've had some turnover in that area. And then the last one, if I can get to it.
I've heard all the ones. I know the crossing guards.
The crossing guards. Thank you. And we've talked about that previously. So that's a way to scale adjustment to bring them up to market and be more competitive.
We have talked about this at great length. If anybody else has any discussion points? Nope. Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we accept resolution R twenty two dash thirty three, being the Syracuse fiscal year wage scale.
Second.
Twenty two.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimous. The next item up for discussion is authorization of administration to dispose of surplus properties by way of police vehicles that have exceeded their life cycle.
Tell me it's one with the horrible taillights. Is that one of them on the list?
Okay, well, we're going to let Garrett tell us about this.
So a pretty standard one that we do right now. This is just an authorization for us to go ahead and release these to TNT auctions so that they can take care of going through the process. Then the money gets sent back to the city after the vehicles are sold.
Okay. Any particular questions?
Is it the one with the crappy taillights?
I believe Marcus is on this.
Do you have a against tourists?
No, just hyper flashing lights.
Okay, I'll take a motion if we're ready.
I move that we authorize administration to dispose of surplus property of the police department vehicles. A second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, chief. The next item we have is proposed ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty two, amending the general plan, updating components of the general plan, addressing moderate income housing. Paul, I think we're going to let you or Noah, do you go ahead? You both worked on this, so.
Well, Paul's more elegant than I am, but.
Would this be his last?
Exactly.
So, okay, well, then I'm going to start. If you two are going to fight over it, and I'm just going to say this, that I recently attended a meeting with Davis County mayors that included the speaker. And one of the things that was addressed that had not been addressed previously, the speaker is very clear that anything on this list of options of what we could be taking care of, if we've done it in the past, we can still count that and just report that we have completed that. And that would count as one of our ones, because I I meant mentioned to him that if we, as we complete them, we have to take on new ones. Eventually, we're all going to end up going through the list. And he said, that's not at all what was intended by the legislature. He said, if you have done one, report that you have now completed it, and that's fine. So that's a little bit change of interpretation. I realize it's an interpretation, not a you know, a mandate, but I I was pleased by that, and we can include that as we go forward. So any other discussion as we take on some other tasks?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
One of the things we are trying to do in the housing analysis section, where we actually list the the three. We were going to try and make the the verbiage such that we weren't getting beat into submission. And so it's fairly clearly says, we are required to provide an implementation. I I feel like we could be a little more proactive that says we as the city are looking for strategies to, over the life of the next five years, to provide some of these services or the these improvements to our community. I I still think we're we're making it sound like we're getting beat with a stick. And while that may be true, we don't need to put it in the plan. I think that there's room for some at least the appearance of of forward thinking.
I think. Yeah, we we did address some of that anyway, like.
That very first, the city desires to increase.
Yeah, then in the very next, then it says, the city selected the following strategies. So we selected an increased modern income housing. We are required to provide an implementation plan. I just think we could.
We are required.
Okay. Anyone else agree with Jordan that that language needs to be changed?
I mean, that was my original point was to to soften the blow a little bit.
I think we try.
Yeah, I mean, we added in the city sees the need to provide options to its residents, and we added some of the and then and then in the sentence that said to comply with state affordable housing laws, we did this. Now it says to comply with state affordable housing laws and a plan for our future housing needs. Like, we we wanted to make it look forward thinking. I don't know. Did we not go far enough?
I guess in in the.
I'm glad you supported me, Jordan, on that.
Now, in the implementation plan, I do we have to put in our general plan that we are required to provide an implementation plan to bring these strategies to life for the next five years? I mean, do we need to to tell them their reporting requirements that are, I think we can just say the city's selected the following three strategies to include moderate income housing.
So the only.
And strike the red next sentence.
Or or working in tandem with the state legislature, we have just chosen.
Or any of those, I I just think we could strike the next sentence and be done. Work, sure, working in conjunction in in with the state, the city selected the following three strategies to increase moderate income housing, strike the next sentence and move on.
I mean, I just think in conjunction with, I feel like can be interchangeable for your purpose.
Sure. I I just don't think we need the following line that that tells them we need to report on this and all this stuff. I I think that's a perpless to this statement.
Sorry, what what line are you talking about? The first line of the last page on the general plan statement.
I'm on a hundred and twenty of the packet, if that helps. And it says the city selected, and we can say.
So I'm getting a consensus that we should strike that line. Are you aware of the line? See it, Noah?
Yeah, I see it now.
We are required to provide an implementation.
Other than striking that line, do we have any other changes?
I I'm wondering, we've got it as a one hundred and forty three percent increase since two thousand fourteen, but it's in even in excess of that at this point, right? We're at six hundred and nine thousand for our median. Sorry, page one eighteen. We show two thousand fourteen is two hundred and eighteen thousand for our median. We show 2014 is 218,000 for our median home. And now we're up to 609 for our median home price. So that percentage is off.
The part that got me was the income.
Davis County median home, median home sale price.
Yeah, I don't think we updated all of the graphs and numbers in this conjunction with this update.
That could have been one we missed.
Can we do that too?
We can add.
So. Yeah, are you comfort, comfortable making a motion that we strike the one phrase and update the graphs with the current Gartner Institute information that was provided?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
So I'd take that as a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, we're putting that one to bed. All right, the next one, item 12, proposed ordinance 2022-23, amending the Syracuse City Zone map for properties at 446, 460, 478, and 506 Southwest or South 2000 West from residential R1 to PRD and at 320, 322, 334, 368, South 2000 West from R1 to general commercial.
As a quick update, we've, we've seen this before, as you know. But then it, we sent it back to planning commission because of the specific items in the development agreement that are I guess, an exception to our ordinance that will allow through the development agreement. Planning Commission reviewed that and is, so the first time they, they forwarded a recommendation for approval. Now, the second time they're forwarding a conditional recommendation of approval. They still want to see the concrete fencing around the adjacent homes. But as far as the land use itself and the other elements of the plan that are in the development, they were, they were okay with that. I think that's the only update. As far as the actual plan that you saw, nothing substantial has changed.
Right, so council, any discussion on where we are currently with this?
Just a quick question on this, or, or do we have to consider both of these simultaneously or these two separate?
It is one proposed ordinance.
Okay. There, they are two separate applications.
Well, if they're two separate applications, they should be two separate ordinances. How do we deal with that as separate ordinances if the council chooses to take them separately? We don't, we only have one number.
I would think that the, the council could split the question. Now, you can always split any question that's before you. And, and then you could direct staff to draft an ordinance similar to the other one, but limited to the, to the commercial area.
Okay, so that's what we can do, council. We will split the question and we can take them separately. Now, any discussion on either part?
So one of the whole ideas of the PRD, I, I agree with the applicant that this is an acceptable use of the, the planned zone, zoned medium density residential. So this is an acceptable use within that zone. However, the, this, the language of the PRD is very clear that the PRD was created such that we trade density for, we get to see the plan upfront. And if it's something we don't see as a good plan, we have the ability to deny it based on those grounds. In this situation, I, I don't love this development. And under the PRD, I, I just, I don't think this is, would be an asset to that area. So as far as the PRD is concerned, I recommend denial.
Okay, any other comments?
I would probably be, I, I would have been agree with, agreeance with Jordan in that the exceptions that are being asked for in the PRD, it, 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 it makes that, there, there's multiple exceptions to what is required by that. And so it, 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 it makes that, that zoning null. And so while there's holdouts, I agree, it shouldn't be based upon the holdouts, but I, I think the holdouts are, are causing the, the, there's issues with the development because of that. And so because of that, I, I'm not a huge, yeah, I, I, I'm not in favor of the PRD.
Okay, any other comments?
So, Mr. Noah, I went to every single thing you listed except for that 50 Gentile, 50 West or North Gentile, because I could have looked it up, but that's not the bracket I'm just for it. And I actually took picture, I drive a four-door Jeep Wrangler, and I took pictures of how small those driveways are and how small the roads are. And I happened to pass one of the townhomes that had their garage door open and there was another four-door Jeep Wrangler sitting inside of it. And I took a picture of it too, because they didn't have much room. So I assure you, there's not a full-size truck sitting in those garages. Those developments reminded me of Europe, where you put two tiny little cars maybe in there, but not a lot of people have two tiny little cars in their family. Maybe some probably do, but.
I don't think we know the depth of the garage yet.
Do we know the depth of the garage?
Well, I don't think that's contingent on approval. If it's small, then.
Well, that's just it.
Okay.
Even in our household, we still have like.
How did your Jeep fit on the road?
It, it didn't. Well, it, and it's just Jeep. And I, for I can only imagine the parking issues that people are gonna have there and getting around each other and stuff like that. I actually had to back up, so 2,500 Dodge Ram could like get down past me. So I go back down and take a picture, because there was just no room for us to get past each other.
So I'm counting three similar positions, so I would take a motion on that half of it if you're ready to make that, because it sounds like we have at least a majority in the same opinion.
So I have no issue with the use. I think that ultimately, based on the commercial assessment of the viability of that region, I think the use is appropriate. It's general plan that way. I don't love the project. I've, I've expressed some concerns with the developer in regards to the narrowness of the roads and, and public safety access to doors that are on the wrong side and, and getting quick response times and such. And so it's the project that is what you said in regards to the detriment of the holdouts, not making the, the project cohesive. And I have a problem with that because it just comes across as bad planning to allow it now when, and I, I hate making decisions based on other people's property choices for their own project that they do own or have under contract, but that's where I'm at right now.
And I am in the minority, so I will.
Okay, so I'll take a motion for this half of it if you want to split the question.
Yeah, I'd like to split the question.
Okay.
Then I make a motion, a recommendation of denial for the PRD, given the current
Okay.
project layout.
Motion to deny the PRD portion of this question.
A second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Four to one, this part of it is denied. Now, do you want to take the question of the commercial section?
Sure, I, I think the commercial section, again, it meets the plan. We know this is right next to an area that's already zoned commercial. And I think this would be an asset to that area to close out, to help move that, the rest of that area to the commercial zone. And I think this would be a huge benefit to our community as this begins to build out and the commercial in that area develops. So this one is a no-brainer for me. I could recommend approval right now.
I would agree with Jordan.
And I make a motion.
Okay.
Would you let other?
All right, so I do want to just make one comment here, and that is that if you choose to go this route, which I have no problem with, but that would mean that you would be opening this up to all and any commercial uses, where you don't have a plan in front of you, you could wait till you had a plan in front of you to make that. I'm just, I'm just pointing that out as something that should be considered.
So that, that was my question and concern is if, if we rezone now to general commercial, what potential?
Yeah, and that, that's what I see is potentially then anything commercial would go in that zone. If you don't make that motion now, then you probably would get a suggestion at least. And then you would know.
Or, for my same reasons, I had an issue with the last plan. I'm okay with this plan because it is contiguous, it's allows for opportunities and, and the use is what I want. I want a commercial use there. So I'd support it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and if those are still valid.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor to agree to rezone the commercial part of this question under a new proposed ordinance number that we get from staff?
Hi.
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 Any opposed?
May, as I'd like to see what is gonna go, what commercial would.
And I, I understand. So, four one, the general commercial portion passes. And we will move on to item number 13, proposed ordinance 22, 2022-24, creating section 4 dot 10 dot 0104 of the Syracuse Municipal Code pertaining to oils, fats, and greases and sentiment control.
Counsel, so I have put together a packet item relating to the regulation of fats, oils, and grease in the sewer system. This is in response to a, a law that's in place for the state to help prevent sewer blockages caused by fats, oils, and grease that consolidate in the pipes and, and back up individual sewers. Although this is a potential for all sewer lines, residential, commercial, industrial. The law requires food service establishments, mainly because that is where there's a larger potential for sewer blockages to occur based on fats, oils, grease. So I have put this together as, as a proposal for you to consider. This would allow the staff to have the tools to help educate and, and help businesses in the city as well as new ones that may be coming in in the future. We want to be more of an advocate to, to help these food service establishments so that they don't block their own sewers accidentally. It comes with things like training and proper documentation, proper disposal, and just general maintenance. When, when you clean out your, your strainer from your drain traps, don't just put it back down the drain purposes to put it in the trash. So, anyway.
So this is a, yeah, do you have any question?
Well, I guess my question was, has, has anything been added since the last time?
No, nothing has been changed since the work session.
And this matches code that is consistent with other parts of the county.
The state or the county, right? And that's what, and I, I like your point to education. Anytime you can help them before it becomes an issue, that's great.
For that, for that reason, I would, I would support or recommend we adopt, let's see, what is it?
Make a motion.
Does this need a hearing? I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is a proposed ordinance.
No, or is it?
Do we need? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we need.
We need it.
Okay.
I move. That we. Okay, that we approve proposed ordinance 2024-20, 2022-24, creating section 4, 10, 10104 of the Syracuse City Municipal Code pertaining to fats, oils, grease, and sediment control.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding emergency backup power at the police station in relation to Emergency Operations Center project. Brody, we'll start with this.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this is an issue we discovered in, in process of designing the EOC improvements. Part of the, part of the project was to plan for backup power for the EOC. And the budget we had for the project is 400,000. And the estimates that we have based on our design and through our architects, that we're, we're within that 400,000. Just barely. However, we did discover an issue with the police station itself where if we were to install as designed for these EOC improvements, there's a section of the station that would not be covered under the backup power. So what the electrician contractor has done is gone through and looked at a couple of different options. And the, the best option that we, we have before us is to, to put in a bigger generator, tie it in at, at, at a, at a different spot in the building and it'll cover the entire building. And that would be cheaper than rewiring the entire building. That would bring the budget up to 690,000. In order to do that, we would have to, to appropriate some additional money to, to get that done. There's a, there's a pad that we would have to pour, we'd have to expand the pad to put the generator on, because it's a bigger generator and, and the two, the two funding options we have available, one is the capital fund. We have an unrestricted balance there of about 2.9 million that we could allocate out of. The other option is the, the ARPA funds that the city has. The, the, the prevailing opinion right now is that it's, it's better and easier to just put all that towards infrastructure projects because the way the accounting and reporting has to be done, it's already like a guaranteed yes. You can just show that it was put towards infrastructure and it's kind of like, no further questions. Other things, you have to, you have to have additional reporting and that sort of thing. Either way, we can do it. It's not a problem either way. But those are two options for our additional funding, if you want to go through with, with the additional backup power.
So council, this is just a discussion item tonight. We won't be voting on this, but we'd like your thoughts.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so if this, from, from what I understand from the previous thing of this, those two generators that were originally going there were supposed to sit next to each other, right?
Right.
The smaller ones. So one of them, the one that went to the EOC happened by chance to go down. It could be switched over to the other one, correct?
If, if it were constructed up front to do that, I think you could.
So if we just moved it to one and to cover the entire, because this feels like the EOC is like, it's covered. So if we moved it to a bigger one, and it happened to go down, how would we?
Yeah, the, at some point, we have a, you know, we have a weak point. The backup power is primarily just designed for when the regular grid goes down. And then this is our backup power, the backup to the backup. We really don't have. But as far as, but to your point, I don't think the design was to connect it so that it could just switch back and forth. I think one, one generator was gonna power one side of the building and one was the other.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It would. If the one powering the EOC happened to fail.
Right.
There's still a possibility to connect it into another one to pick up that power back. But if we make it just one giant generator to, and if power goes down on it, we don't have a extra backup for any.
Correct.
And it's, I mean, I don't know, I think it's funny the way it is, but.
Yeah, I, I actually am in favor of just doing one larger one because of the maintenance costs. It's easier to service one motor than two. I understand it, it would be nice to have a backup to a backup.
Yeah.
But at the same time.
You won't ever need it, but you know, no.
At, at the same time, I, 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 I hope that this, I hope number one, that we will be maintaining this generator and, and using it frequently. And, and the second part is under most circumstances, you're only expecting to have to be out of power for a week or so. Generally, power is restored within that time. And if it's something bigger than that, there's a lot of bigger problems. I think this is actually an acceptable design. It's, is however unfortunate that there's another $200,000 of additional cost.
And I, I, I get to write a lot of reports for federal grants and if we can avoid it at all costs, keep the staff time minimal, use the capital funds. It's a terrible idea to force things that aren't approved and require extra permissions and again, reports and stuff, so.
I'm okay going forward with it as recommended out of the account, but someday I just want to hear something well under budgets.
Okay, well, this will be a future item. It's only a discussion tonight.
So is the, is the blue area that's not backup power, that's this, that's this, this diagram above the aerial of the building?
Correct.
Yeah.
Like a lot.
So like how critical is, I mean, I guess the ham radio is pretty critical in a emergency.
I mean, I guess the ham radio is pretty critical in a emergency.
I don't think that's, the ham radio would be in the E O C, wouldn't it?
The ham radio would probably use. Well, no, it it's over. If you look at the. I mean, it's showing it in this diagram. I'm just saying, is it essential? Do we have to have that space covered or is it? To be clear, most ham radios are designed to run off a car battery.
Yeah.
Bring in a car battery and plug it in.
Yeah, yeah. So this is a, this is a, this is a question of the importance of having your police station operational. You know, to, to to clarify, the actual project is within budget. This is outside of the scope of the project, but it is fixing a problem that that could be fixed while we're in there.
We were shut down for COVID.
What, what, one thing I do need is a functional E D during a disaster.
Yeah, the nature, the nature of the disaster is important. Sometimes you need the police station, sometimes you don't.
The law will, where the.
Well, and and anytime you remodel, if you can save yourself some of the steps so you don't have to tear anything out that you just replaced to fix something that could have been fixed at the time, I think that saves us money in the long run.
Yeah.
All those ones have been braver covered.
Okay, so I'm gonna move this along and before we come back to item fifteen, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and move into another voting item that we have to do in our R D A meeting.
Mayor, we forgot one, the second part of that discussion was are we okay to move forward with advertising for the the bids for the E O C?
Yeah, I would, I'm supportive of that. I think it's.
With, with, with the additional.
It looks like the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So before we go into our closing part of this meeting, I'll take you into the R D A meeting. Call the R D A meeting to order. I'll need a quick adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? Okay, our only item for this meeting is the R D A resolution, R D A R twenty-two dash oh three, authorizing the execution of an agreement for tax increment financing related to restaurant construction in the Syracuse Town Center redevelopment area. This has been discussed and kind of tentatively agreed to, so we don't need to go into depth if you're ready to make a motion. Because that we did kind of agree to this ahead of time.
This will be dedicating R D A funds for thirty K reduction and impact.
For reduction of impact fees to.
I propose we accept the resolution of R D A R twenty-two oh three, authorizing the execution of an agreement for tax increment financing related to restaurant construction in the Syracuse Town Center redevelopment area.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
I.
I.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city. We're excited.
Thank you.
We get soft opening, we're gonna go to soft opening.
An analysis of our fees just to figure out why we're.
Oh, yeah.
That's on the next work session.
Yeah.
Next session.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna adjourn us from the R D A meeting. And now we'll move back into our Syracuse Business Meeting where we are at public comment. If there's anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment, come forward. You're allowed three minutes. Please state your name and address. Seeing none, I will move us out of public comment. And now we'll go to mayor and council announcements. This time we'll start with Jen.
Okay, so the preparedness fair is coming up in, what is it, twenty four? I just, I already have this written down. My apologies. Twenty-fourth is the Preparedness Fair over at the high school. And then coming up in October is the Fire and Police Open House. And that's turning out to be a pretty great event. For consideration for the council of the, by combining the two departments, their budget for this might come in a little close, but they would like to maybe get some signs for it, so they're not sure yet. But I'll know before the very next meeting. Oh, and they also put in a request, Golden looked into getting two porta potters because of the strain that it, the bathrooms will take at the firehouse. And that's above their budget, so something that might need to be considered, like, pretty quickly. Also, maybe possibly, but goes as well as we hope next year, look into possibly adding Public Works to the day and making it like a citywide, I don't know, he's not even listening. Maybe adding public, in the future, maybe adding Public Works to the event as well, because they got some cool stuff over there. On Mr. Robert, I saw that Ben Trek, Trek Lawn Mower today. I was gonna ask you also about maybe seeing to get them some shade cover or something, if we can look into that. Maybe do what we can as a city to protect our outer and secondary epidermis layers, keep them from getting cancer. That thing's really cool. If you guys haven't seen it, that lawnmower, I didn't know we had that until today, and it's pretty stinking awesome. The mosquito U M A A Annual Meeting is October twenty-third and twenty to the twenty-fifth. Be back in time for that, our meeting that evening, but I wanted to also readdress the dare program, so not this next work session. I would like to, I myself would like to present some information to the council. I've asked Officer Paul, Paulard, if he could help me with that. I contacted the chief, he sent me a little bit of information about C O P and stuff like that. So not the next work session, but the one after, I'd like that to be there. And I did ask Officer Call to also maybe add a dare table to the event with the Fire Department, Police Department, because not letting that program fall to the wayside and keeping it front and center, hopefully we'll.
We'll put that on a future work session.
Thank you. And I think. Oh, and also, Mr. Robert, can we see that getting those U dot quotes in yellow instead of matching the barrels? People keep telling me it's hard to see them at night. Yeah, they're all orange and they mass match the stationary barrels, so.
We're hoping people aren't hitting either one of them.
So, but more importantly, I'm hoping on hitting people. And I actually talked to a couple of them and they said that, yeah, they'll have to wave at people. I'm like, well, if you didn't match the stationary objects, it might so.
And so we'll, we'll bring that up, but I don't know if we have any control over that.
That hurts my, no.
Okay.
And that's it. All the questions, comments, concerns, emotional outbursts, I got.
Jordan.
Well done.
Thank you.
The first item I have is the Waste Management District. We've been meeting. We've been talking about the efficiency of the MRF that the referred so much about. While it is pulling a lot of, of recycling material out, it's showing about ten percent of what is coming in is is recyclable material. They don't, at that, it costs them, I think, five dollars a ton to go through that, to go through that garbage. However, the cities that have a recycling program, that that's dropped off, they're able to recover from that or recycling material approximately eighty percent. So, given that they cannot, the MRF is not capable of handling all of the waste from all the cities every single day. They have prioritized to get the most bang for the buck and reduce wear and tear on the MRF. So they are pretty much just running recycled materials through the MRF just to get that eighty percent because at that point they are able to recover, they they get a plus fifty dollars. In addition, raw materials, I I have a sheet that I should send you guys. Just last month, they were able to sell aluminum for, I want to say it was in the hundreds of dollars for a ton. I think the offer last month was six dollars. So they are trying to be as efficient as, as possible with the, with the, the MRF, make sure it is getting the most bang for its buck. But I think the message we all were hoping to hear is that we're, we're all recycling because we have a MRF. The MRF is doing amazing things. It, we, we've all, several of us have been on a tour of it. It is amazing at protecting our landfill and diverting material out of it. But it's to the point now where the Waste Management Management District is encouraging cities to look at implementing our cycling program. And they are, one of the items on the table is they will help cover the cost of the cans. But they are back to recommending that all cities implement some type of recycling programs, not only prolong the life of the landfill, but there is a cliff coming. Because once this landfill field is closed in about seventeen years, the cliff is that now we'll be diverting a hundred percent to a different landfill, at which point all of our fees will go up quite dramatically. And so there are encouraging cities at this point to implement some type of recycling program. Again, I'll, I'll have more details on, on ways that they'll be able to hopefully help lower the, the cost of, of entrance. But they figure, look, if we can do it a little by little and start getting in a recycling mindset, we are able to be better with our trash, it'll reduce the impact later. Because if we have to divert all of the stuff that we're putting in our garbage cans right now, there will be a lot of unhappy taxpayers, unfortunately.
Either that or we're gonna have to extend the landfill down to South Weaver.
Sure, something like that. Downhill. Something, something will have to change. And so I, I just wanted to get that out to you guys. That's a little bit different story than we've heard in the past.
Very different.
And I was a little disappointed by that, but I, I, I did look at the data and all the facts of what we're recycling and everything and just running, only getting a ten percent recovery out of standard trash is just wearing out of the MRF where it makes sense to use that where it make the most, do the most good. The other thing is, I'm one of those people that, I love Halloween. And I just want to let everyone know the pumpkin walk is coming up. Everyone should carve a pumpkin because it's awesome and Halloween is awesome. And am I allowed to mention the thing we talked about briefly?
Yeah.
Sure. All right. We are going to have a haunted house contest.
Haunted house.
Decorated.
Decorated house.
For the city.
It's, they, they call them haunts. So, so if, if you know the lingo, you're in, if you're in the in crowd and the Halloween, there will be a haunt contest. So all of you that are out there decorating your homes, we are, we're still looking into what we can do for prizes. There's been mention of golden pumpkins and some. Yeah, information will be coming, but it's pretty awesome and everyone should decorate for Halloween because it's still warm.
Thank you.
And, not done yet. On a personal note, it is my son's birthday. Happy birthday, Brant. He's eleven. I'm done.
Lisa.
A quick report on illumination. It was fantastic. Anyone who got to be there for it saw just, it was amazing. So amazing, yeah. So we just want to thank everyone involved because that was a huge effort of volunteerism. So bless everyone and they were really thankful for the city providing the venue and all the, the crew of Syracuse that set up stages and all, all the stuff that happened. So thank you to everyone involved in that. And we, are we going to be putting the parking about, by the Syracuse Junior High or Syracuse High?
Yeah, that's on the future session.
Right, okay, just want to make sure that, that it was mentioned that, so they know we're gonna do something.
Next work session.
Right, and then the Halloween thing. A quick shout out to Krista. I had the opportunity to be involved in a conversation she had one-on-one after a lot of things were being said online. And she was incredibly diplomatic, very professional. I was really proud to be in the room while conversations were had that could have been antagonistic and may were not, so. Bless you, Krista, for being such an asset to the city. And then Paul, I just want to say we love you, we appreciate your incredible skill, your talent, your expertise that has kept us out of hot water, your professionalism, your diplomacy, your incredible objective mind that when so many of us are subjective and we just, I have so appreciated working with you. So thank you for, for being such a good man.
Here, here.
Thank you, Paul.
Proshax, thanks.
I might be there when you cry right now. I wore mascara today. I don't want to cry.
So as the liaison to the C T C, we, I put off our, our last update because they did not meet, they're reorganizing at Davis Behavioral Health, and so they're not meeting until October. So you won't get a report on that, but they did just start their first learning to breathe course at Cook Elementary, which is a great course to help kids with oppressive symptoms and anxiety. And so I think that that's one of the great benefits and assets of C T C and having them be a part, or us be a partner for them in the city. And then they're hoping to start the parent component of it, which is every day strong for parents who have children that are participating in it, which is obviously the very important component to make sure that the household has the support they need. And so they're always looking for volunteers to help get trained to, to run and facilitate these courses. And so if you have somebody who's interested in reaching out and helping out the community, like we had our, our volunteers for illumination, I think those, you know, we need more and more folks that would be involved in, in our youth. Especially since, you know, as I reported before, C T C's, some of their major strategic goals this year are to continue working on reducing youth vaping, adverse or illicit substance use and then reducing associated depressive symptoms and anxiety and stress. And Jordan's very familiar with that. His daughter did a great, a great project in regards to that as well. So get the word out. Yeah, yeah. So get the word out, help, help out where we can. Our youth are one of our greatest assets, so.
Oh, no updates for me.
All right, that's one to mine.
I mean, I thought Paul's was important.
Okay, so I have a couple of things just to mention. Update from the sewer district as we just met. That you know that we've been working on a pipeline to change the outfall point. It's supposed to help the water getting back to the Great Salt Lake. It has now, the lake has now receded to the point that the outfall point is going to be a half a mile from where eight thousand feet from where we've stated that we would be too close. So we are actually working on some in the, over the next couple of months, working on some solutions to that. Because the thing that we want to make sure is that we mitigate any problems with pragmities, which would be our responsibility. And also make sure the water actually gets to the lake because that's the problem with the outfall point now. So just to let you know that that is something that is an ongoing challenge.
Is like just a trench option?
No, because it would, there would be too much evaporation and if it wasn't lined, you'd lose some soil. So we're trying to make sure as much water as possible gets actually to the lake. And if the lake ever does come back, then we have to be prepared for what happens, which of course, if we pipe it, then we might have a bubbler somewhere out in the lake, but at least that's a, that's where we're leaning at the moment, but we're working on that. And I'll keep you updated as an engineer, you might, yeah. Anyway, just let you know that that is upcoming and a challenge that we're facing. The Syracuse Arts Council met and has selected their season for next year. They have three upcoming concerts, which will be, there will be a spooky themed concert, a Christmas themed concert and a spring concert for the orchestra. The jazz band will be performing again a couple of times, including at the Pumpkin Walk, which will be a great addition to the city.
That's awesome.
Their musical season, next summer's musical will be Hunchback of Notre Dame, which is not a film. It, it's actually a musical and it's a very large cast musical, so. Anyway, so it's pretty exciting because it's not often performed, mostly because it's very large. And so we're gonna be taking that on. And then the junior musical for next season, now not to be confused with our current one, because we are now in auditions for Mary Poppins Junior, which is which is going on this fall, but because our season actually goes from September to September, we choose the next one. And so next year's is right now is going to be Seusical Junior for the junior cast. That would be fall twenty twenty-three, so.
Like Dr. Seuss is in Seusical?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I was like, I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's a musical, it was a, the junior version, yes. And very popular amongst the kids. So those are the updates from the Arts Council. And. And with that, I am going to say that we have one more item this evening. We need to uh take consideration.
Mayor, could I make one announcement? Um in addition to the manager's report, one thing, so Robert and I have been. Uh discussing and he's looked into the storage for uh left in our secondary water system. And because of the collective management of the water. Both council, staff and residents. Um we, we've calculated, we've got enough that we can actually extend from the twentieth to the twenty-sixth.
I was gonna ask.
So we're going to get six extra days of water.
It's gonna rain for the next four days, maybe even longer than.
We'll see.
We're about to have a little mini monsoon.
The, the, the last full day of, of full pressure would be that Friday. And then um the shut off would be Monday.
So that is kind of a bonus and we'll see how that goes. Uh the other, the other thing that I neglected to announce. Preston, am I okay with the other announcement? We are going to go forward.
It's totally fine. It's a mind game.
All right, so am I okay with the other announcement of the contest? Okay, so we decided just on the whim that we would add one other public contest. Um hopefully will appeal very much to lots of kids. Uh we were announcing that we will have a candy haunted house making contest. That will bring your candy up edible candy haunted house to the rec center. Um on the Saturday, the twenty minute. And we will have some judging and surprises. And uh we might get some elaborate and we might get some really fun edible ones.
And does it have to be kids?
No.
Okay.
No, no, absolutely not. But we are, we are making sure that we mention kids because.
Okay.
Sometimes people think, oh my gosh, the elaborate gingerbread mansion that uh, that a professional chef might make. Would be the only thing acceptable and we will have prizes for both youth and adults if we get both. We have no.
No easier category.
So we could get both, but I would encourage everyone to, you know, do this with your kids because if nothing else, you have lots of candy on the table to eat. And that's good. Um but if not.
Maybe we should do it after.
Very much fun.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, so there will be an article that will be coming out announcing both of those in the October. Uh edition of the connection as well as social media posts, but I think we have really done. Uh so, or Halloween upright. In addition to the fact that I will just also note that we just had a. County puts on the scarecrow walk, which is currently active down at the Botanical Center. We have a scarecrow there. It's kind of shabby, but he's holding a sign that says, welcome to the Syracuse Pumpkin Walk. So that was my intention of creating that and it advertises for what we do here in Syracuse, so.
We didn't do that one. He did it on someone.
So I used that opportunity to put that out there.
Well done.
We were gonna do one too, but we found out you already had someone doing one, so we didn't.
It was, my emphasis was to announce our pumpkin walk and that's why I, I jumped on that when they said we could do one for the city.
Good idea.
So, all right, then I will take a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Any opposed? Let's go to closed session.